Tommy, where's Terry? On the phone.
Delivering a baby.
Okay, what, what? Sorry, Teresa. Um, all right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Marcus is gonna talk light rail for about an hour here, so, and then we're all gonna, those of us who can make it, we're going to take a ride on the rail.
That's right.
Anthony may join us, I hope, we'll see. Mr. Riddick is not here today. He has got conflict, and so here comes Terry. Let me just ask real quickly, you got anything, Andy, you wanna, with council, Barkley?
I'll get back to this, re-disscribe and awards. As you know, we had a rather lengthy, uh, hour discussion last week.
It was all in the best of spirits.
Subsequent to that, subsequent to that, proposal, I guess, call the Jordan proposals out there, but I think there was some tweaking done, I guess, by Tommy of not, with a new set of lines that does not break up, uh, Northside precinct, after a lengthy discussion with our mayor, I think he's agreed that would be a good compromise, also talking to Tommy and Terry.
I haven't seen it yet.
We haven't seen it.
No.
Oh, you went to USO.
You did talk to me, and it wasn't in a closed room, and we didn't smoke cigars.
But anyway, how do we go about, I think, I feel like, at least in my mind, it's a good compromise, and we try to figure out how we get this, we put that as, what do we call it, 2A or something, and discuss it next week.
And I think it's a good result, too. One of the issues I had was dividing of precincts, and I didn't want to divide any, but this only divides one instead of two, so I think it's a step forward. Obviously, there's some, the guys who were most affected by the change in awards, you know, have been, liked the plan as well, and so I'm perfectly agreeable with the plan. I appreciate Barkley's leadership here, as well as, you know, Tommy and Andy coming together, and I'm prepared to support that as well.
So, what I guess, the mechanics of it is, are we gonna review it before that, and I guess the?
Well, you know, I know that-
What do we do next?
Okay, well, in light of that, I mean, I don't see any reason to put the change of Northside on the, on the agenda. Follow me. My, my earlier notion was we would take all of Northside and move it to, over to Tommy's ward, but now this doesn't move Northside at all, and Northside stays as one precinct. The only thing that happens is West Ocean View gets, gets divided. We've already given it to the attorney to, and he's already got the plan, so you can see it, Terry, so, I would, Tommy, I don't know if you, Tommy, if you wanna continue with your plan now, or just put on the, on the compromise at this point.
No, I think the compromise is great, 'cause we all talked about it, so.
Yeah, I think, I think-
So, we'll have, we'll have two plans, we'll have two plans on the agenda. One, this compromise, we were never very far apart, and, and the-
The Jordan?
The Jordan plan.
And we can, Mr. Attorney, we can have those both at the meeting next week in Akron.
Yes, we can, our surveyor is putting them in the correct form to describe the boundaries now, and that we met with Mr. Jordan yesterday, and were able to put his plan on the webpage that we had developed, and had the previous alternatives on, so that Mr. Jordan's plan is on the webpage now, and we'll have that ordinance ready for next week, we're working to get it out to you this week.
This one on the webpage?
This one is not yet on the webpage, and hearing your discussion of it today, we will-
Just not having a problem with it going on the webpage.
... ever to put it-
So, we have 2A and Jordan?
Yeah, and I can summarize this briefly. The Ocean View School Precinct, which is, I think, the largest precinct in the city, is really comprised of two neighborhoods, the Willoughby section and West Ocean View, which is commonly called Ocean View, but it's really the western part, and it just took the Willoughby section and left it in Ward 1, but it puts all of the West Ocean View section in Ward 5, and this does not break up a community of interest, because the civically, actually, that represents that area, this is their exact boundaries for that civically, and Willoughby has their own civically. So, when we're looking at what was happening before with dividing Northside up, that takes care of that issue, and then it keeps this community together as well.
Okay, and I appreciate your work, I think everybody's ability to compromise, at least the affected people, again, it really didn't affect me, but it does affect me, because it's my ward, and it's the mayor, so, you know, so, I think we've come on something there.
Just on that description up here, do you wanna take off Northside on there, 'cause it's no longer, anything else left?
That's all I have.
Okay, no other questions, that will, move ahead.
I have one thing. I was reading about the changes that were proposed, or that actually passed the general assembly regarding meat hole, and how other cities are looking at what they're going to do regarding meat hole. Are we looking at what we're going to do, or if we're going to do anything, or how other cities' ordinances may affect our ability to attract and retain businesses? 'Cause I think some of the other localities are looking at doing away with it, or reducing it drastically, or, you know, something, they're, they're exploring all the parameters, all the options that they have under the new general assembly legislation, so I hope that we are looking at that, so that we can remain competitive when it comes to attracting and retaining businesses.
Yes.
I'm not a fan of doing away with revenue, but I don't wanna do away with businesses either.
Sure. One of the options is to allow it to be a flat tax, is that?
I mean, there's a, there are a couple of different options available, and I just don't want us to get stuck out there, where, you know, we're not up to snuff with all the other cities in terms of competitiveness.
True, and even before the general assembly action, that's something that we do, Ms. Williams, each year, we look at how competitive we are, we look at the different tax rates and structures versus other localities.
And you've got something on your desk on home-based businesses, I suppose, that you're looking at?
Yes.
Okay.
Good, good.
All right.
I just have one thing, bees. Are we gonna see a bee ordinance?
He's written the order.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've already written.
Are we gonna vote on bees?
We have bees, bunnies, nothing, get the third.
Birds.
Or bees, bunnies, and birds.
So, it's all coming together?
Yes.
I heard. Okay. Okay, we're gonna redraw and move on. That what you guys do in your committee meetings?
Yes.
Bees, bunnies, birds.
Bees, bunnies, birds.
We're at least come up with ordinances. We're at least making some progress. Maybe not the biggest issues in the world, but people can sing about the birds and the bees and the bunnies-
Buzz about the bees.
On the, while they're busking, and moving ants. And they're all gonna be riding their bikes down to the bus station.
Buses, always a good business.
Busking, bikes, birds, bees.
Yep, we've got the bees.
Okay.
Okay, very good. Mayor and council, today, staff, we've spent a good deal of time with light rail and the operations of light rail, and it's very clear that those discussions haven't come up to this level, so what we're trying to do today, before we ride the tide, we have a couple of presentations, one by John Kiefer, and another by Bob Batchery, to talk about what we're doing in terms of just the operations, as well as the promotion, and the promotion activities, so we'll start with John.
Good afternoon, it's, I think we're gonna have a good time this afternoon, we're gonna talk all about light rail after three and a half years of construction, you see the light at the end of the tunnel, we're coming to the end of the track, and we're gonna tell you all about it today. The revenue operations date has been announced, is August 22nd, and it will be open to the public for free rides starting August 19th. What we're gonna be doing this afternoon is I'm gonna speak a little bit about the, an update on the construction schedule, also in your places, you have a packet that includes a tide information guide, that has a lot of the information, and we'll be talking about some of the details and some of the questions that you may ask. We're gonna talk here for a little bit, I'll speak, then Bob Batchery will talk about the marketing and publicity plan, we're gonna get out and get on the train and ride out to HRT's vehicle storage and maintenance facility, that's where they have their operations control center, we'll be doing the maintenance on the vehicles, storing the vehicles, and that's where their employees report to work. Jim Price, the HRT's director of rail operations, will then give us a briefing about their testing programs, train operations, maintenance, and cleanliness of the trains and the stations. Then we'll hear from Ron Edwards, who is HRT's safety and security manager, and he will talk about the safety certifications that are going on with the rail project, as well as, well as security. I do wanna start off by mentioning, you know, there's a lot of people that have been involved in this, this project, and I'll mention some of them as we go through here, but, you know, we've been through a couple of city managers, we've had ACM involvement, excellent support from them, Stanley had the project for a long time and got it, got it well, well along. Darryl Hill and his finance folks, you don't hear much about them, but they're keeping track of all the expenditures and paying the invoices. Utilities has been involved extensively in relocations of things, as well as public works, recreation parks and open space department has installed the landscaping and will be maintaining it. There's been a lot of contact between police, fire, and EOC with the HRT security people. They've run a number of drills on different scenarios, and have been working together on security and safety procedures, and of course, our communications department has been involved throughout the, throughout the whole thing. Quickly, I think you know the status of, of the construction, a lot has been completed. May remember that we had over a year's worth of extensive work, utility relocation downtown with a number of utilities. We received excellent cooperation from those utility companies, particularly Dominion Virginia Power, and that took a lot of coordination by our public works folks, a lot of traffic control from police, we had excellent cooperation from DNC, the downtown businesses and residents, and the civic leagues throughout the project. Second thing listed there is wetlands mitigation, this was, there's a wetlands created over by Grandy Village that's become part of the, one of the amenities of some of the new construction and NRHA has done over there, that was completed early in the project, and we did the, you know, the major eastern and downtown civil and rail construction, which was very disruptive for a long time and finished about a year ago. The 11 passenger stations are, are done, the traction power system with the overhead wires is complete, and I have a, this is something you might find interesting, this is, this is one of the, the wires that you see overhead, it's not just a small thing that, that you might think of as a, as a wire in your house, I bent that, and see if you can see it. But, you know, they, they brought that out on a spool and have strung it overhead, and that will have the electricity, and it will, again, a bare copper wire that the train pentagram will be, will be touching. Vehicle storage and maintenance facility is completed, we'll be going there as our, and a stop on the, on the train ride. The light rail vehicles have been brought in, thoroughly tested, there's nine of them, they're all ready to go, and have, all have been run for 1,000 hours, so they've met their testing requirements, and there are a lot of real estate actions we're taking care of as well, and the city attorney's office is involved in a number of those. Work still needing to be completed, but is nearing completion, the park and ride lots, you'll see that there are three park and ride lots under construction at Ballantyne Military Highway and Newtown Road, and we're gonna go out to Newtown Road and see that one. The fare vending equipment, I have a, a board here that we can pass around, it shows the ticket vending machines, and, you know, you'll see one of those out there, but you can see that it's a simple operation, you can put in money or a credit card, and it gives you a couple options on what type of tickets you might get out of it, and on your fact sheet, and I'll talk a little bit about some of the fare structure, but we'll see some fare vent, it's one of the fare vending equipment machines, there's one down here and also out at Newtown Road. The landscaping for the project is nearly complete, the, there still is some work to be done over at the EVMC station and at the park and ride lots, our recreation parks and open space, Darryl Critten and Dean Bowles have done an outstanding job of making the whole project look very, very nice, they do have a little bit more to do, and they'll be maintaining the landscaping on the project after we go into operations, except for the parts inside the fence lines that, that HRT will be taking care of. Public art, that work is in progress, there are medallions on the platform, station platforms that are a number of stations, in the handout it mentions where those are located, there is not one out at Newtown Road, but they are at the other stations. The other thing that is happening is the glass wind screens in the back of the station, stations themselves, those are being taken out, and they'll be etched with different designs, and there's been some publicity about what those look like, and all that should be done within the next couple of months. Additional safety items, as we neared completion of the project last, last September, and with the new safety manager coming on board, there was a, an extensive walkthrough by a number of people from the city, including our traffic folks, police, as well as a number of people from HRT, where they walked from end to end on the rail line and identified a number of additional safety items that needed to be installed to make it safer. One, one type of item that's being installed right now is, are the safety humps that you see along the edge of the tracks to keep people, keep motorists from going into the wrong locations. We're also gonna be installing some bollards, they're represented by orange cones right now, but those bollards will be installed within the next week or so. We also put in a lot of additional signage and, and improved some crosswalks, so that work is ongoing as well. They're continuing to order their spare parts and materials, and we're continuing to work on the traffic signal system. Our city transportation traffic folks, John Stevenson and some of the others, have been up nights working on this for the last month and a half, the signal system is working pretty well. Yesterday, we had some problems where we had some of the signals were locking out, and either not letting the trains go or not letting the cars go, and we're working through those problems, and it's, and it's much better today. So, all of this work will be done by August. Now, HRT is into their operations testing, what they're gonna be doing is verifying that they can meet their projected schedules, and so they've started running trains at basically a full schedule as of yesterday. They'll continue to do that through July 14th, and then what they're gonna be doing is for a month, they'll be running their operations just as they're going to when the thing is, is open to the public, they'll be running full operations all day at the full schedule, but without passengers, that's a requirement from a safety standpoint that they get from the state and the federal transit authority. Now, with that comes some particular challenges downtown of our police department and HRT in terms of traffic enforcement and so forth, we have a lot of situations where people, delivery trucks and whatnot, are used to either parking on the rails or parking in the travel lane next to the rails, which forces, forces people to drive out around them. We can't have that anymore, and so there's gonna be an extensive continuing program of education and enforcement as needed. Over the last few months, the city and HRT visited every business along the downtown rail route, and as well as outside the downtown, spoke to them about safety procedures, deliveries and so forth, we sent letters to all of the vending companies, but getting the word to everyone is gonna be a challenge, but that's gonna be one of the big things we're dealing with over the next month, is to keep people off the, off the track so the trains can run. Again, we mentioned that revenue operations will be starting in mid-August. This is the rail line.
John, you wanna come back to that, because I-
Yes, sir.
I mean, I think most people, as we were having that press conference today, there was a guy riding his bicycle right down the middle of the tracks, you know, and I think most people see that as, I don't know if they see it as a walkway or a travel path, but I don't know if we need more signs, or we're just a strong education effort, but, I mean, during the press conference, I looked down and I was standing on the tracks, you know, I mean, it's just, I mean, it looks like part of the walkway of us, so we need to alert people, this is a whole new change in attitude-
Yes, sir.
-about that, and it's not gonna be easy.
Yes, sir.
I mean, it was a very simple bike path, 'cause this guy was just following the trails right to, to bike, you know, right down the road, it could look like it.
We've had cars drive through the plaza here and stuff, hopefully those speed humps that we put at the end will, will warn people not to go in there, but it is gonna be a continual challenge, and it will be easier for people to cut through, but, you know, we've had our city employees, all kinds of people used to, using that as a shortcut, and we're gonna have to educate people, and are working on it very, very strongly, there are efforts going out into schools, public service announcements and so forth, that we'll do everything we can to educate people.
I have a question about the fare vending machine.
Mm-hmm.
I didn't, if that's an accurate display, it's English only? Is there going to be any type of bilingual translation anywhere?
I don't know, I'll have to, I'll have to find out, that's an interesting question, I don't know.
Angela, we'll, we'll remember to ask that question on the tour, 'cause Jim Price, out on the tour, we'll have to answer that.
Don't know that, yeah, don't know the answer.
Okay, I mean, we have people from, you know, I mean, the common, most common is like Spanish, so.
Right, I'll try to remember to ask that.
This is the, the system, you see it, the, all of the stations, except for the one at Norfolk State are at grade, the one at Norfolk State by Brambleton Avenue is an elevated station, and there is an elevator, elevator there, all of the stations are ADA accessible, and there's been extensive work to make sure that they're compliant with all of that. Okay, the, the schedule for the tide, and again, you have this stuff in, in your handout here, we'll be running, as indicated there, from 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM, Monday through Thursday, we added an hour to, rather than 10:00 PM to 11:00 PM, here within the last week, Friday and Saturday it'll run to midnight, and Sundays, we took some hours off in the morning to compensate for the Monday through Thursday, and it'll run from 11:00 AM to 9:00 PM, and you'll see that there are different frequencies during the peak hours, the trains will be 10 minutes apart, and at off-peak hours, they'll be 30 minutes apart. This is the fare schedule, and the same fares apply to all-
Sorry, the hours?
Yes, sir.
When, um, say there's a Tides game-
Yes, sir.
And people come in to, on the tide, to watch a Tides game, but we know that baseball games go longer sometimes, or if there's a rain delay, I guess they're just-
No, no, one of the things that we will be doing is, is working with HRT, they'll be attending our city special events meetings, and also, we've already talked to them about the fact that if the baseball game does run late, they'll continue to run the trains, and so we'll plug in on things like that, as well as some of the major events down at Harbor Park, so that, so that people aren't stranded.
And the festivals at Town Point as well?
Yes.
Okay.
They're on our special events committee, so anything that we have that runs late, the, we'll intend to run the trains late as well.
Okay.
The fares indicated, the, the one, one-way fare, one ride is a dollar fifty, the one that's perhaps more useful is the $3.50 fare, and you get down to the daily and monthly passes, and you all have a, a free ticket there, a one-day go-pass in your packet that you can go ride the, the train or the buses around all day for that fare.
Do we have a, is this in our package, the fares?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. Uh, you know, those are the standard fares, there are some opportunities to work out deals with, you know, universities and businesses that Bob Batchery will talk about in a little There are parking, stations with the light rail parking, the parking is free, you see the number of spaces there, now that adds up to 750 spaces, which we don't think is gonna be enough, so HRT is involved in some efforts to try and increase that. One thing that they're doing is they're in the process of negotiating a, a deal with a church to try and add 170 spaces out at Newtown Road, and so there are opportunities to continue to improve the amount of parking, but that's what we have right now, and also we'll have shuttle buses and so forth when, when necessary.
Nothing at all on the Colly Avenue yet, huh? Nothing on the Colly Avenue?
No, no parking over at, no, sir, not at EVMC Fort Norfolk, no parking over there.
And is there any anticipation?
No. Now, that will be served by a number of bus, buses, including the Net Bus, that'll be coming down Colly Avenue from Ghent to serve that area, so we're hoping with that shuttle bus, they'll run the same hours as the light rail, that that'll provide that service. In your packet also, towards the back of the handout, there's some information on the Net, the new schedule and so forth, but there was no parking planned for that station at the, from the start.
So, let's just say the first day that the, first Monday that this is running, what happens if 400 cars come to Newtown Road to park and ride it in downtown? What are you, what are you gonna do?
Well, again, HRT is hoping to have some additional spaces across the street that would handle 430 cars.
As of August, when it starts, you mean?
Yes, yes, but there are gonna be occasions where, where there is more demand than there are spaces, and so one of the challenges is to find ways to deal with that, there could be some remote parking lots a few blocks away that they could run shuttle buses to and so forth. To a great extent, we have to see what happens, but that is one of the challenges, is to get more parking, as we hope and anticipate that there'll be more people riding it than than the capacity.
John, if I can, I can kinda touch on that one.
Steve, we don't say you're ready.
Councilwoman Whibley, we, one thing we discovered in doing some of our outreach out, when we met with the business and, businesses at Newtown Road, there was some interest by the hotels and that to actually start getting into the shuttle business, they saw some business opportunities by having that become a, a hub, so I think part of it will be the response from HRT, but also the, the local community there seems to be getting very creative as to how to transport people around, black and white cab was there, so I think we might be seeing some new entrepreneurial movement that we haven't seen before, kind of what Frank has been talking about with TOD, with the brick and mortar, there's gonna be business and kinda human change of behavior over there, too.
Yes, thank you, Bob.
John, is the Newtown Road parking lot gonna be done?
Yes. Ask Mr. Schuchett, yes, sir, he's, he's very insistent on that. There's a lot, a lot of work to be done there, half of, half of the new, half of the military highway one is done, the Newtown Road one should, should be finished without a problem. When we go out there today, you'll see there's an awful lot going on.
Okay, I was just there by that way last week, and it, okay.
Yes, sir, they do have a lot to do, but, you know-
Make sure you mix the, the concrete the right way.
Yes, sir. Uh, now, with the, with the light rail, HRT is increasing their bus service, primarily increasing the hours of the bus service, and this shows the tentative routes, or the routes that are intended to connect to each of the stations, the different bus routes, and you have some material in your handout that shows each of those bus routes, as well as one of the maps of each, for each of the stations, that shows where the bus routes go, but there is an extensive network of connector buses that ties into the existing bus system, the hours will be the same as the light rail, again, we'll look for opportunities to run buses at special events, and we'll have the Net Bus downtown. In your handout folder, you do have this tide information guide, there's a lot of information in there that we haven't talked about, be happy to answer some questions on it. I mentioned the bus service to light rail, that has individual maps of the, of the stations in there, there are a number of brochures, a couple of them by the city and a couple of them by HRT, that describe the system and talk about safety. This system map shows HRT's current bus routes, they'll be updating that with the light rail, and the last thing you have in there are vicinity maps, these are on the wayfinding boards at each of the light rail stations, and they're replications of it, and they indicate, you know, nearby attractions and so forth, as well as the bus routes that, that they might take. Be happy to answer any questions before Bob comes up.
John, it, it's still in, kind of an honor system in the sense that you buy your ticket, and you don't go through a turnstile, so you walk onto the train.
That's correct.
What are we, I, I'm just curious about the process of how we're double-checking to make sure that people are actually paying for the fare, and that we're also not just having people that are riding it either to pay for money, you know, that are using it for things that are, they have, what, are they walking through when it stops, or are they walking through every station?
There, uh, it is on our honor system, where you buy your ticket, because of the layout and so forth, being in the, in the middle of the city, it isn't practical to do that, so you will buy your ticket, it will be time stamped when you buy it, you'll need to use it, say, the, the one-way ride within an hour or so forth, if it's a weekly pass, it'll indicate the time. There's two things happening in terms of fare enforcement, HRT has a contract with a private security company, and they will have fare enforcement officers riding the trains randomly. In addition, HRT is gonna be hiring off-duty Norfolk police officers, basically two per day for the full time of the operation, and they will be insisting in the fare enforcement as well. And they will be insisting in the fare enforcement as well. So what will happen is, you know, randomly, the fare enforcement or police officer will get on the train and, you know, walk from one end to the other to, uh, to take care of the fare enforcements. And if somebody's non-compliant, then he gets into some legal stuff. And we have some, uh, ordinances that the city attorney's office is working on to cover some of that. But that's the way it'll work. It will be an honor system otherwise. There will be times when people get on and they won't be checked, but there are other times where they will be.
Well, that was my second question, was what's the fine for not paying, I guess, or?
It's, I believe it's a class-one misdemeanor and I'm not sure what that means.
It's pretty heavy.
But it is, it could be a significant fine.
Let's go to jail.
That's, that's, that's in jailable. That's 12 months in jail, $25 a month. I can't remember what it is.
It's fairly high.
I'll have to get to what it is.
They'll be encouraged. You get off at the next stop and buy a ticket first. And this is the way, this is the standard operating procedure for all 23 systems, so. Because of the multi entrance, so even in Jersey, it's done that way.
Right, yeah. I mean, I'm, I'm aware of that. I just, but every state also has different laws and rules and I wanna make sure that we are.
Those ordinances will be covered in front of you.
Tasha Scottney in, in Burner's Office, we've had a meeting with, with her and police and HRT. And they, and they have reviewed the ordinances to make sure things are covered. And I believe there will be some modifications coming to some ordinances in, in a bit. Uh, so that, that is being looked at.
Well, and my, my other part of the question deals with youth.
Division.
And, kind of, the light rail being a, a safe harbor, for lack of better terms, for kids that are in need of transportation, um, and that it's a safe place to go, um, to be able to get home, but they don't have the fare to get on the train, but could, could get on it still if it meant their safety and being able to get from a location to a home, you know?
Yes, sir. And one of the things that we are working on with HRT is to meet with each of the universities, TCC, Old Dominion and Norfolk State, to try and work out a system where with a student pass, uh, everybody that's a student will be able to ride the rail. And with that, Bob can, can talk about that a little bit.
Which one of you two can we ask questions on, on the prices?
Me.
All right. With regard to city and Norfolk parking, when it came to parking at, uh, MacArthur Center, I think it was, if you were paying, it was eighty-five a month. Does that sound about right?
Mm-hmm.
All right. And, and I was just calculating it. Under the scenario, somebody could save $25 a month if they park at an outline parking ride and come in on the light rail.
Yes, sir.
What is the parking that people pay to park at Harbor Park?
That is, I think, forty-three dollars a month, Bill.
Well, did we ever calculate that if it costs forty-three dollars to drive your car to Harbor Park and park, that it would be more expensive? If you parked at Newtown Road, it would cost you basically sixty bucks a day. Why wouldn't it be the inverse? Why haven't we figured this out yet?
Parking at Newtown Road is, is free.
Right, but the cost of the rail is, is gonna be three bucks a day, basically.
Well, it's fifty dollars for a monthly pass.
All right, let's say you don't get the monthly pass. Let's just, all right, monthly pass, fifty bucks. It's still more expensive to park at Newtown and to come in.
Get right to your front door.
No, I mean, fifty dollars at Newtown versus eighty-five dollars to park in a garage.
I agree with that, but, but you're still cheaper to park.
To do that, so, well, but if you park at Harbor Park, then you also have to buy a rail pass from there.
Why?
I mean, to get on the train and ride from Harbor Park to here.
You can walk.
Well, you can, yes, sir.
Well, part of the idea is to get out of your car and avoid the traffic.
Well, I understand that.
And to your front door.
Yeah, we, we've had an extensive amount of conversation about all of, all of these types of scenarios. And there's a lot of possibilities and to a great extent, we have to kinda see what happens and react to it. And it, you know, it fits into some, some other issues of incentives we're trying to do for businesses and who's paying for the parking? The individual or the employer and, you know, issues relating to the parking system. So for now, uh, you know, we're gonna leave it as we're talking about, but we do have the opportunity to revisit that as, as we see what happens. You know, we're trying to guess at how people will use the rail and they'll figure it out and they'll be pretty clever and we'll see what happens.
There's, there's the cost of gas.
Yeah, but I'm just looking at the fact.
A lot of reasons.
That if you, if you parked at Newtown, it's great. You take it in, you save a boatload of money.
Mm-hmm.
Versus if you can, if you're parking at Harbor Park anyhow, now Barclay did have a good point, you know, when baseball comes up and you have the new rail system that comes in, there's gonna be less parking spaces. We had mentioned that last time. My, I'm just looking at, it, it's awful close. And, you know, you park there and you're saving yourself eight bucks anyhow versus staying at Newtown. I may wanna look at and reconsider what we're charging at Harbor Park for people to park there and encourage them to park out, take the rail in.
I thought right now, people parked at Harbor Park and then took Net in. Am I correct?
Some do, some do, some walk.
Actually, walk from Harbor Park, sadly, very few.
Well, I mean, the, the Net has not been running over there since we got into the construction, so they've been walking.
Well, that's good then.
Actually, your, your question is a good transition from going from building it to now marketing it. And just kinda some personal observations before we make this switch, because, um, I've had the pleasure of trying to run away from this project for about four years. And it seems like every time I've tried to run away, I've been reeled back in as a communicator. I don't need to go into what the history's been on building this, but it's, we, we have been, um, we've been involved in building the largest infrastructure project in this region this century. And I think that's something that we gotta all pat ourselves on the back for. There's been relationships built, there's been relationships ruined, and there's been relationships rebuilt. And one of the things that's done, though, is it's also challenges to kinda think new ways. We knew for a long, long time that there would be a conflict between the traditional parking model and MS transit model. And we are nowhere near the New York Cities, the LAs, the, the Denburs, where they've got a, a real crunch unless they had some kind of mass transit system. So this really is that visionary role that the mayor talked about in this morning's press conference. That there were some real guts in this room, around this table, to embark on a vision to build for the new generation. And that's where we're at. And yeah, people will do the math and say, okay, I can park at Harbor Park for forty-two bucks or I can get fifty dollars and park free. As Linda Davis will remind us, though, who handles a lot of our monthly parkers, that dad gets the, first of all, the question comes up about, uh, the parking in the lot. That part of the cost isn't just the free and the, and the, and the thirty-dollar pass, or fifty-dollar pass, but it's also that, uh, opportunity cost. And that I get up to the lot, it's, uh, it's an hour longer than I usually take. I don't really have that kinda time. I can't park as close as I want. I gotta walk a little further. It's a little more inconvenient. I get to work and the school calls and my kid's sick. Now I gotta go out and catch light rail, get out to Newtown Road, find my car. The next day, they're signing up for monthly parking. Because as Barclay says, you know, their car the week before was right next door. So there's some of those opportunity costs that people apply. And that's why it's so important, now that we're moving into the marketing side, that we really start listening to the people that are gonna be riding it and starting to adjust as to what they're gonna do. Over the last four or five years, we've been building this infrastructure project and responding to impact of construction. And out of that, we've learned from people and we're using that as our base to make, to go the next step with, uh, with marketing. But for about four years, I've been waiting to stand up here and tell you guys that today is for you and then on August nineteenth, everybody else will be able to ride this thing. It is here. It's gonna happen. There are still some things that need to be worked out, which is why people will not be riding it tomorrow. Uh, working out the signals and working out, uh, the, the, the idea of having a train downtown. Pardon me?
So why are we on the, on the Guinea Pigs?
The, the eleven officials are the Guinea Pigs.
You know, ask Markes, that's, no.
See if it works. I mean, I saw the woman who drove up on the track last week, so I don't know.
Well, I think there, there was some, there was some conversation about this and the justification is, believe it or not, they said, because you own it, you get to ride it. There's other people that won't be able to until the nineteenth, but it's because you're the client on this. I do wanna say, one thing has changed since, since, uh, February one. Is, is the approach that we've taken.
Are we paying the mortgage, too?
Yes, right.
Yep, we sure are.
That, since, since February first, um, we've moved into a task mode. Uh, the city manager has made this not just the work of an individual, but as John says, the work of a team to pull this together. And now the marketing is gonna be a true team. This packet was put together, uh, over the last forty-eight hours for you and hopefully, in response to some of the things we heard around the table of what you were looking for. There's a, there's a folded piece on the right-hand side that I don't think John has mentioned, that the rider will be able to see at the station. And that's an orientation map. On the right-hand side, it's a double-folded, folded, uh, eleven-by-seventeen piece that, uh, will show where they're at and how they can go around. The, uh, marketing on our next step is, uh, broken into basically five components. Outreach, special events and activities, publicity, promotions and opening events. The, uh, we've been focusing a lot on having business cluster meetings, pulling our businesses together, finding out what is it that they are looking for. Again, these are relationships that we built downtown during, uh, during, uh, construction. And so we're able to go to them and say, okay, what's our next step? We've gotta do safety training with your employees, but then what is it, what kinda questions are they asking? And then feeding that information between HRT and us so we can respond to it. Uh, DNC will be having a special member briefing in July where we'll bring the downtown back together, not just to talk about safety, but also talk about trying to get, re-infuse the enthusiasm. I can tell you that not only, and they're here today, not only is the media excited about this, but the general public is. You hear those whistles and those bells coming downtown, people will run to a window to see the, uh, to see the piece. So we wanna get that energy going again. We've been working very heavily with our civic leagues along the route. And so we're rebuilding those relationships and having them talk now about getting engaged in the success of light rail and getting people enthused about it. Colleges and universities, John mentioned, and I'm gonna talk a little more about a program that ODU has. It's a model where ODU students, if they show their, their student ID card, they're able to ride all transit-free. And by the way, that card that you got will get you on, on all modes of transit, including the ferry, uh, for a full day. And then, of course, Light Rail Now and other associations, Light Rail Now is the, uh, advocacy group out of Virginia Beach. They are very enthusiastic. Thanks to Brian Pennington and talking with him, very enthusiastic about getting with us and advancing, uh, light rail. When we looked at the business cluster meetings, I wanted to focus just a few seconds on this. It wasn't a matter of just looking at where can we get the most people? But our economic development office, thanks to Sarah Parker, were able to pull together some tools that did a, um, a radius around each station to see what businesses were in that area and to build these long-term relationships. As I mentioned earlier in response to a question, what we're seeing on some of this analysis, it's not just people that are there, but it's opportunity. Uh, our Newtown Road clustering we had June first was held at the, uh, the Holiday Inn Express, I call it, the Holiday Inn, uh, Executive Center. And that was a relationship that was actually built when Betsy Rad was over here at the Radisson Hotel. And she's now getting a core group together to look at how can they get creative about using the light rail to come downtown. That hotel now is gonna be able to market themselves as a downtown motel. Because when they have conventions come in, they can sell downtown activities and have a shuttle bus over to the Newtown Road Station and move people in. So it wasn't a matter of just using old relationships, but looking at how can we build, um, new ones. Special events and activities. This is the one that a lot of people are getting excited about, because they wanna do stuff. And the June first meeting was very important to us because that showed that HRT, the city and other entrepreneurs could actually work together to share the message. We put together kind of a fair activity. There was a PowerPoint presentation, IMCDA. Uh, we had, uh, traffic's, which is the, um, a, a product of HRT to talk about how to use car pooling and a variety of other mass transit modems for transportation. We had all of them there to present their wares and to educate the public. Because again, this is really a partnership of all of us working together. Uh, out of that came the model to, to set up the other cluster meetings. But also out of that came some really insightful questions. I also will tell you, I was a little cynical, because having to be the front guy and talking with the media over the last four years about this project, it's easy to fall into that mindset. What we found with these fifty-five people that are at that meeting, they were excited. Never once did budget come up, never once did time, the timeline come up. They wanted to know, when can we ride it? And when we ride it, can we have our bike? We had people wanting to know if they could put their moped on it and go, how far can I go? Where can I rock, you know, where, how far can I park away from it and walk up to it? So there was a lot of enthusiasm and we're quite candid with you, some questions that we didn't have answers to because they weren't questions we had thought of, but we now have those answers. So it's a growth process. And we're gonna encourage that you keep asking those questions, because that's how we're gonna learn from it. We're gonna have open houses along the route. One of the things we discovered during the safety day back in April is people wanna see it. They wanna kick the rail, as I think you all will, will see today. So we're gonna be setting up a couple of opportunities along the route between now and opening day where they'll park the train, not, not for more than maybe a half hour, it might even be just about a ten-minute type thing, to have people come in, be able to kick the tires, or there's no tires, kick the rail and check the seats out. And then it really started interacting with it. One of the things that we know is ninety-some percent of our population has not ridden on mass transit either ever or in the last two or three years. And so we've gotta make a major transition. And we're gonna be counting on all of us to do that. The other thing that we have an opportunity to do is sixty percent or more of our ticket sales in Norfolk for the arts and entertainment come out of seven venues. So we pretty much control that market. And then with our relationship with Ticketmaster, that basically covers almost a hundred percent. So seven venues or cultural affairs is working up a program that will be funded, uh, that will encourage a fair ticket interaction. Where if you're coming in to see the, the Mormon Tabernacle Choir and they're not consuming all the cars, then you'll be able to, uh, to take light rail in and that there'd be an exchange on your ticket. Uh, in talking with the admirals, group sales tickets, the first question you ask is, what's your, what's your largest vehicle? Well, I can get seven of my closest friends in my SUV. Well, now you can have up to ninety friends and sit and, and stand on the way to the event. So it provides opportunities to kinda really look at how we go about doing group sales. Ongoing ridership events, um, Alt Daily's gonna be looking at sponsoring that and, and you've seen some of their work already. We're not encouraging zombies on light rail, but they've got some really out-of-the-box type things that I wasn't quite sure of, which means they're probably really a good idea. And so we're gonna be looking at those kinds of partnerships to really get some of the younger people on board who don't have the kind of apprehensions that we've got. We're even getting dynamic and new. Uh, you'll be seeing over the next ten days on our website, a brand-new dynamic portal, uh, on our website where we'll be linking in not just to the HRT, but also some creative ideas. Uh, it's kinda scary, because now that we have a start date, people are starting to think out of the box. And so when you have a webmaster think out of the box, it becomes scary. We're now looking at putting a mermaid on the, it's not living, so it's okay. Putting a mermaid on the, uh, light rail as it's going through the test mode and having a tweet contest. Uh, that we'll tweet out when the mermaid's gonna be on the bu, on the light rail and people will tweet where they found it and we'll have a contest for free ridership. So those kinds of new creative ideas are coming from our residents who are saying, hey, have you thought about doing this? One of the things we've learned, again, since February one, is that we can have these great ideas, but we've gotta task them out. So I will warn you, that's the mode we're in. If you come up with a creative new idea, we may be asking you to chair it and, and head it up. Uh, we have an e-newsletter that was developed by Economic Development that when we have a meeting, we collect emails, we're sending these newsletters out. That's in the, uh, right-hand side of your packet, I think. Um, and that gives the resident or the participant in the meeting an opportunity to interact with us, to get involved as a volunteer, uh, to, uh, tell the story, to do things on the website, to talk about, to expand the message. The best way to do this is a one-on-one. Um, and then, of course, the traffic's model, which is HRT's model to encourage, uh, incentives and, and things like that. We're gonna be launching a brand-new business partnership. John's, uh, referred to that, which is part of the Denver Eco-Pass. It's a program that they use in Denver to encourage businesses and schools to, uh, to encourage their, their employees and their students to ride. It's a deeply discounted, uh, program where you can basically contract for a year at a certain rate per employee or per student and buy into a deep discount and all your employees by the use of a, uh, an ID card can ride free. This would encourage not just ridership on the light rail, but also to open up those barriers to riding on the bus or, or riding on the ferry. Uh, that's being pitched to the top ten employees, um, in the region and, uh, the three colleges and universities. We're meeting with ODU, in fact, this Friday. It's a model off of what they already do. Um, and then we're gonna be approaching the city about, uh, looking at a, a model program there. Opening day, this is where you all come into play. And Breck Daughtry, hats off to you, sir. Thank you. Breck has taken on the, the, uh, ODU's responsibility of kind of herding the cats and bringing the committee together so that we can have a, a well-thought-out, uh, plan for opening day. As you heard today on the media, uh, the nineteenth, twentieth and twenty-first will be free. But there's opportunities to kinda really put a profile around that. Uh, we're looking at doing a thank you community celebration, possibly downtown, because our businesses downtown need the support. They've been wonderful partners in putting up with the construction downtown. Do events at all stations that will show what that, uh, station is like, kinda going back to those first slides where we showed the radius of the kind of businesses that are in those areas. And of course, the Virginia Pilot, uh, has discovered that not only is it a, a news opportunity, but it might be an advertising opportunity, too. So I think you'll be seeing one of the old-fashioned commemorative, uh, supplements that they're gonna be putting out. We're working with them now on that.
On the community celebration, we are including our outline neighborhood, correct?
Yes, yes. This whole, along the whole route, we'll have the opportunity to celebrate the, not just the coming of, of light rail, but the coming of a new generation. You got it. Uh, obviously, HRT is doing a variety of, uh, marketing things. Uh, they are gonna be running, uh, PSAs or commercials in the movie theaters. They've got the conventional media, uh, program that's being, uh, rolled out. They've got, uh, Pulse R has been hired from them. And of course, social media, already they're tweeting and Facebooking, uh, light rail as we speak. And of course, social media, already they're tweeting and Facebooking light rail as we speak. So if you've got that Facebook account, go ahead and go in there and like HRT. There's some key message points, and Mr. Mayor, thank you for using these this morning because I think they are, that is the reason we're in this business. Light rail is a visionary move. Light rail will create new opportunities for mobility. We're seeing it already as people talk about it. Enhanced mobility will connect all communities within Hampton Roads, but also on the Mid-Atlantic. We've actually got people talking about when high-speed rail comes in, you can actually ride your bike from Larchmont to Manhattan. Transitory development and light rail will secure Norfolk as a cultural financial. You can. I'm sorry, it'll work. Not just from Governor's School to Larchmont, but you can go all the way to Manhattan. And the well-connected, managed public transportation system provides a safe system for all communities from youth to age. And Tommy, that kind of plugs in to what you talked about. Light rail is the right system for now and for our future. This is being built for future generations. And I want to say, from the community and having worked with them for the last four or five years over this project, thank you for having the vision to move it forward, but it can't stop today. We all have to be working on it. And the one deliverable, as we're learning from Marcus, you always have to have a deliverable, is 2,900 butts in the sea every day. And it's going to work. Thank you. I think we're going to ride, right?
Yes. The train will be leaving in like 10 to 15 minutes. Because of the safety considerations that HRT has, we can only take, you know, select, counsel and selected staff and members of the media. And so let's meet downstairs.
Before we meet, are there any questions? Before we leave, any questions? To Marcus, can I? One thing I've said to Marcus, that, I mean, his charge as the manager is to have the entire city administration within the next two months, you know, pointed in one direction, and that is for a successful launch of light rail system. We want a complete commonality of purpose throughout the entire administration, that this thing is going to be successful. I want everybody to question how, what they can do to make it successful. This is everybody's job, not just managers, not just John's, not just Bob's. It's all of our job to make sure this thing gets off on the right foot. And everybody in this, everybody who works for the city ought to be thinking about how they can make that happen as well.
That's right.
The second thing is, Marcus, do you have somebody who goes to sleep at night and then wakes up in the morning worrying about ridership? I mean, who's, and I don't mean just Bob, but I mean, you know, I don't mean just Bob. You know what I mean? I mean, Bob, you've got communications, you're doing a lot of stuff. You're providing all sorts of information on all sorts of projects. But that one person who every day says, we missed this opportunity, or we should have done this, or I'm glad we did that, we've got to do it again, you know, I mean, who's, you know, who worries about this almost on an hourly basis? And that's, seems to me, this thing is so important to us and to our future that there ought to be a person charged with, you know, with, you know, riding the thing every day, to check in the parking lots, to making sure they're cleaned, that, I mean, that the, that the stations are all being well-maintained, that, you know, that somebody's picking up the trash, and where are the riders? Is a convention coming in? Are we doing this? I mean, you know, there's a new business out at Newtown Road. Are we approaching them? Somebody who's got all of that, who becomes indispensable to us on this, on the association. I don't know if I've said that the right way, but I mean, I really think that we need that person. Or someone like that.
When are we expected to come back?
April 19th.
By 5:00.
Everyone on this council is supposed to ride this train daily by the way.
You are part of the council, you don't have to buy a ticket to do it.
I'm not sure I can show houses on the train.
There's Wi-Fi in the morning. Where's the house as we go by?
That's one of those questions that we got from, currently there is not, however, it is wired. So it can be. As I said, the MAX bus, which goes from the oceanfront to Newtown Road, does have Wi-Fi. So you can use Wi-Fi from the oceanfront to Newtown Road, and then have the peace and quiet of rail trail.
Well, I hope at some point we'll have Wi-Fi.
Probably sooner than later.
Is there an association of light rail organizations and people, I mean, is there? Is there a website? Is there an organization of communities that have light rail that talk about best practices and all of that?
Free Wi-Fi.
We have free Wi-Fi.
We have a city.
That's the sign of a changing city, is if they offer Wi-Fi.
I mean, it may be fast, you can pay for it fast, but.
Should be open everywhere.